Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, July 29, 2024, and it is exactly 6 o'clock. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Unit B, various professional staff. There is an error. It is not Communication Officers AFSMI Local 1636. That has been done. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, by roll call, please. Taylor, aye. And the board will return to public session at 6:30. Good evening and welcome to the open session of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, July 29, 2024. It is exactly 6:34, and the board returned from executive session, having come to an agreement with AFSMI Local 1636, Unit B. And I would ask that you please, please check your cell phones, make sure they're off. And if you are audio or video recording this open meeting, please look by me as chair. Thank you. Chief Lori?
Detail. Present the color.
Forward.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Lori, for the recognition and swearing-in of our police officers.
Good evening, everybody. This is an historic day for the Falmouth Police Department. This morning, we took the two-hour ride to Andover, and we watched nine of our recruits graduate from the academy today, with dishonor guard in attendance, representing your police department and honoring these nine. They'll be starting Wednesday. That brings a total to nineteen officers hired and two clinicians since September. We have two open positions as of July 1, and I'm pleased to report we have three lateral transfer applicants for that. So I'll be before the board in September with hopefully twelve people, nine academy graduates, and three lateral transfers. Exciting times for the Falmouth Police Department. So today, to kind of sum this up a little quicker, I'm going to be calling up all the individual officers that are going to be sworn in today. We will all take our oaths together, and then I'll say some closing remarks and let the board get to its business at hand. Anthony De Palmo, please come forward. Anthony was born and raised in Massachusetts. He moved to Arizona and joined the Scottsdale, Arizona Police Department, where he served as a parole officer and detective for nine years. Anthony and his young family returned to Massachusetts last year to be closer to their extended family, and he joined the department in January of 2024. Anthony will be pinned by his wife Shannon. Emily Levens, please come forward. Emily was born and raised on Cape Cod, where she continues to live with her husband and children. Emily joined the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office in 2020 and became a member of the Falmouth Police Department in March of 2024. Emily was recently selected to join our school resource officer team, and she will be pinned by her mother, Elizabeth. Jeffrey Creel, please come forward. Jeff was born on Cape Cod and is a veteran of the United States Army. He joined the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office in 2014 and was a canine officer from 2019 to 2024. Jeff joined the Falmouth Police Department in May, and Jeff will be pinned by his wife, Maddie. The Sheriff's Department is not too happy with me right now, but they're very welcome additions to the department. Eric Foley, please come forward. Eric has served as a municipal police officer or campus police officer in Massachusetts for over twenty years. He has experience as a supervisor and investigator throughout his career. Eric joined the Falmouth Police Department in May, and I just want to point out, he is a former Mashpee police officer. He didn't go back there, he came here. Eric will be pinned by his son, EJ. No relation, Patrick Foley, please come forward. Patrick was born and raised on Cape Cod, where he continues to live with his wife and family. Patrick most recently served as the Deputy Chief of Police for the Berkeley College Police Department and has worked in law enforcement since 2014. Patrick holds a bachelor's degree in police operations and administration, and a master's degree in public safety leadership administration. Patrick will be pinned by his wife Alexandra. To close out, the six police officers that are being sworn today, I'm asking Richard Heslin to please come forward. Richard is from Chelmsford, Mass, began his career in law enforcement in 2003. He was most recently an acting sergeant for the Rochester Police Department and has held both investigator and supervisor roles for the LaSalle University Police Department, absent college public safety, and Massachusetts College of Pharmacy, and health science public safety. Richard holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell and a master's degree in criminal justice from LaSalle University. Richard will be pinned by his wife Sonia. So, we created two additional sergeants' positions today. So our ranks go from six patrol sergeants to eight today, in the future possibly adding more. Two of the biggest areas of liability that we face in law enforcement, failure to supervise and failure to train, and we're going to do both of that here in Falmouth, and we're going to do it with the help of these fine sergeants that we're going to be promoting here today. Sergeant Christopher Patolino, please come forward. He's a twenty-year veteran of the Falmouth Police Department. He was born and raised in Falmouth and attended Falmouth High School and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Sergeant Patolino is also a veteran of the United States Army and currently a sergeant first class with the Massachusetts Army National Guard with over nineteen years of experience. He's married to Jennifer, has two children, Ella and Chris. His biggest passion is his family, especially his daughters' lacrosse and sons' basketball games. He credits his wife for supporting the decision to become a sergeant and apologizes for being stuck on shift work again. Touche. Sergeant began, Sergeant began his career with the Falmouth Police Department in 2004. Prior to that, he was a correctional officer to the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department. He attended the 44th MPTC Plymouth Academy. In 2007, he was appointed detective and has served there since that time. In addition to his detective duties, he ran the narcotics unit since 2013 and is recognized as an expert in narcotics field and teaches narcotics and other subjects for the MPTC. He's a TASER instructor, DT instructor, Vector Shield Bike Team member, SWAT and SWAT boat trained, and Level Four Health and Wellness instructor with the MPTC. In addition, he is a SAP instructor for Cape Cod Police Academy. Sergeant David Massey, please come forward. A native of Falmouth and dedicated sixteen-year veteran of the Falmouth Police Department, graduated from Falmouth High School in 2002 following graduation, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, serving with distinction until 2006. Sergeant Massey joined the Falmouth Police Department in 2008, initially working midnight patrol. In 2015, he was appointed detective, a role in which he served diligently for eight years. Throughout his career, Sergeant Massey has had multiple specialty positions, including serving as a firearms instructor, field training officer, honor guard, veteran, affairs liaison, and special response team member. And he has served overseas for this country in his military role. Sergeant Newton Cardoso, please come forward. Newton is a nine-year veteran of the Falmouth Police Department. He was born in Brazil and moved to Falmouth in 2001. He attended the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Sergeant Cardoso began his career with the Falmouth Police Department in 2014, initially serving as a dispatcher. In 2015, he was appointed as a full-time police officer, completed his training at the Municipal Police Academy. Over his nine-year tenure with the department, Sergeant Cardoso has distinguished himself in various capacities, including a field training officer, special response team member, sex assault investigator, translator for the Portuguese-speaking community. In addition to his operational duties, Sergeant Cardoso serves as an instructor within the department specializing in firearms, TASER, defensive tactics, Vector Shield, Bola Rep, and health and wellness. Sergeant Cardoso also, everyone knows, put together our gym downstairs when we redid that station. And he will be pinned by his mother, Alusa, being figlio. Sergeant Joshua Oliver, please come forward. Sergeant Oliver grew up in a cushionette and graduated from Old Rochester Regional Vocational School. He moved to Falmouth after meeting his wife Kayla and began working for the Falmouth Police Department in 2005 as a laborer and later as a crew leader. He was hired by the Falmouth Police Department in 2012 after graduating the Municipal Police Academy, who's assigned to midnight patrol. During his tenure with the Falmouth Police Department, he has held multiple specialty positions, including vehicle fleet manager, co-chair for the traffic advisory committee. He also is a member of the mountain bike unit, ATV unit, community engagement team, and social media team. Perhaps most notably, Sergeant Oliver has been one of the primary organizers of the annual Touch a Truck event for Tommy's Place, which raises tens of thousands of dollars each year for the local charity. Just under sixty grand this year, everybody. Sergeant Oliver is currently enrolled at Cape Cod Community College, working towards his associate's degree in criminal justice. He will be pinned by his wife Kayla and his children, Mason and Kenzie. I think you can see, with all the sergeants that you see before you today, they're all overachievers. You know, they've earned their spot here today, doing a fantastic job for this amazing community. Lieutenant Ryan Hurt, please come forward. Lieutenant Ryan Hurt, a native of Falmouth, has served for nine years for the Falmouth Police Department. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Bridgewater State College and is currently pursuing a master's degree in criminal justice from Anna Maria College. Lieutenant Hurt joined the Falmouth Police Department in 2015, following his tenure with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department at the National Street Jail in Boston. Upon completing the Municipal Police Academy, he served as a patrol officer for three years before being selected as a school resource officer for Falmouth Public Schools. In 2020, Lieutenant Hurt was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Hurt has undertaken various specialized roles, including sex assault investigator, field training officer, mountain bike team member, investigative support team member, and civil rights officer for the department. Lieutenant Hurt will be pinned by his daughter Charlotte with the help of her brother Connor. Captain Douglas DeCosta, please come forward. Captain Douglas DeCosta is a thirty-three-year veteran of law enforcement. During his career, he has held assignments at various ranks in the administrative division, patrol division, and detective bureau. Captain DeCosta was born and raised in Falmouth and holds a master's degree in criminal justice from the University of Massachusetts. Prior to becoming a Falmouth police officer, Captain DeCosta served six years in the United States Army. He has been recipient of numerous military and department commendations and awards. He will be pinned by Noah, his son. And just to let everybody know, we just received a grant from the state for $250,000 for a body-on-camera program. He's going to manage that program, as well as our certification and accreditation program, which is best practices in the Commonwealth. He's doing an outstanding job. I'm proud to introduce my succession plan to you right now. I don't plan on retiring anytime soon, but when I do, you folks are going to be in great hands. And the board will make their decision on how they want to make the next chief's promotion, but I'm telling you, for the next at least five years, I'm going to be working alongside him, mentoring him, leading him, coaching him, to be a better chief than me, and that I am the last chief that's hired from outside this department. And that is one of my sole goals and missions moving forward. So I would ask Deputy Chief Brian Lowen to please come forward. He was hired by the Falmouth Police Department in 2002. He was promoted to sergeant in 2010, captain in 2020, and deputy chief in 2024. Deputy Chief Lowen has held several specialty positions in his career to include the following: juvenile officer, court officer, detective, drug task force, sexual assault investigator, investigative support team, field training officer, mountain bike officer, and ATV officer. I also want to point out, that's not in this bio, we hired twenty-one people, and he was our hiring manager through all those processes. Did an outstanding job. Outstanding. Deputy Chief Lowen holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westfield State College and a master's degree in criminal justice from Curry College. Deputy Chief Lowen will be pinned by his daughter Emily. I would now ask for the clerk to please come forward, and I'm asking everyone in attendance here in uniform to take the oaths.
Pretty impressive. Y'all can raise your right hand and repeat that committee. Eyes, state your name.
I have the name.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
On all duties incumbent upon me.
On all duties incumbent upon me.
I state my rank and position. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
In understanding.
In understanding.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Nine states of America.
Nine states of America.
Bottom office of Massachusetts.
Bottom office of Massachusetts.
The charter and bylaws of the town of Brown.
The charter and bylaws of the town of Brown.
I'll be your eye.
I'll be your eye.
Congratulations.
If I could have all those that are pinning our officers to please come forward?
Chief Lori, if there are any children in the hallway that belong to any of the officers, I'd like them to come back in.
We're going to take your back, take your back. Alec, which one is yours?
Both.
Did you guys crash down that way? Yeah.
Kind of concussive, you have to add. Officers, archers, hut. Detail. Present arms. Famously promoted. For. Present arms. Falmouth officers. Order. Arms.
So I want to thank everyone, I want to thank the board for letting us take up this much time in your meeting. Those here that could forward some of the pictures you took to your loved ones so we can memorialize this, I would appreciate that very much. Today, I'll end where I began. This truly is historic. To watch nine graduate and then swear in thirteen in their various roles is an absolute gift as a temporary caretaker of your department. I was given a charge back in June of last year to make sure that I as the temporary caretaker take care of our officers, but I want you all to know how great of a job they're doing taking care of us, and it's an honor to work alongside and lead this amazing group of individuals. With that being said, you are all dismissed.
Certainly is historic.
If they ever get back there, I get to play again.
You have a family?
We have a thirteen year.
You okay?
No, I'm fine.
Oh, you have to say, "Bye-bye."
Congratulations. We here in Falmouth have so much to be proud of, and as we thank Chief Lori, we thank his staff, and we thank the new officers and the officers that were promoted, I also really want to thank the families who support these officers and doing the work that they do every day. Okay, we're going to move on to announcements. Any announcements from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make an announcement. It's more of a comment, a follow-up of our last, most recent meeting, where we changed our informal entertainment policy to a more formal, written-down policy, but I told some of my musician friends in town that it's really not a change, it's just putting to paper what was our previous policy. A lot of people were concerned, they read the newspaper, they read Troy's Take and Enterprise as well, and they were concerned that it was a new policy, we were trying to shut down music. Not the case. It's a work in progress. We're just trying to put things in order so that people have a perspective of what they're working from. Business owners will know what to expect, residents will know what to expect. It's not perfect, but it's a work in progress, and we hope to refine it as we go forward. But we don't intend for it to make drastic changes to our entertainment system.
Ms. Brown, any other announcements? We will move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on our agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is there anyone here for public comment? Sir? You can go right to that microphone.
You can just close by one?
Yeah.
I'll keep it quick because I have these two time bombs with me. My name is Luke. I grew up here, went to school here. My kids go to school here. I was just calling about concern about what Doug Brown had mentioned about this new sound policy. Definitely when I saw the way it was written out, I was really concerned. I thought it left, it left a lot, it made me feel very uncertain about the future of doing live events in town. That policy, that if you can hear it from outside the door or the lot line, to me, that basically means anybody could shut down any live event at any time, was the way I read it. And I know we can't get into the nitty-gritty of it, this is just a comment. Everybody I know in the entertainment industry does it because they really love it and they feel like they're doing something that they're adding to their community, they're connecting with people, they're offering something to their fellow citizens through putting on music events and live events. It's really risky, there's not much money in it, we just do it because we're passionate about it, and it means a lot to us, and we think we're adding to the culture and the community of our town by having live music events. So I feel like if there's going to be sweeping measures passed, honey, please, sorry. I need a noise ordinance right now for this one. If there's going to be sweeping policies passed, it would be nice if people in the industry were a part of that conversation too. So we understand what's being proposed, and it's not just the people who are complaining about it and want to stop, but it's also the people who want to keep creating it and keep making art are part of the conversation. That's it. I'm going to let you guys go now because these kids are.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will get into our committee interviews. Interview, vote, and appoint committee member Waterways Committee. Jim Teague, are you here?
There.
Now you can.
Here's mine. Okay. So what do you, what sort of thing do you want me to do?
Okay, you don't have to do anything just yet. You have your application. Is there anything that is not on your application that you would like this board to know about you?
Well, I grew up in Falmouth. My father was chair of the Waterways Committee probably fifty years ago. He came to this town because he loved the harbors and the fishing, and he started Green Pond Boatyard, the Clam Shack, bought the Harborview Fish Market, and it's been such a part of my life, and I've been on that harbor, running boats, sailing boats, and I very much like to have some, you know, all the years I've been doing this, provide some expertise to the committee so that good decisions are made in regards to our treasured harbors and waterways. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments for Mr. Teague?
I would just note that we did receive a letter of recommendation from the current chair, Joe Bochi, so I think that speaks pretty highly of Mr. Teague.
Waterways.
I say we certainly know Mr. Teague knows the waterways around the town of Falmouth. I think he'd be a wonderful addition to the Waterways Committee, and I would move the appointment of James H. Teague to serve a three-year term on the Waterways Committee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. Okay, we're going to move into our public hearing. It's 6:59, and we have an application for a one-day entertainment license shipwreck, A-6 Falmouth Road Race Afterparty Shipwreck, the Heights Motel Parking Lot. Mr. Zelinski for the notice, please.
Madam Chair, revise notice of public hearing. Notice here, I give another chapter 140, section 183 Alpha of the general laws as amended by chapter 2. The two shipwreck LLC located at. Falmouth, Mass as applied for a one-day entertainment license. Held in the parking lot of shipwrecked Heights Hotel, three grand out on Sunday, August 18, 2024, 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Hearing on the above application will be held at senior center, Old Silver Room, 780 Main Street, 8540, on Monday, July 29, 2024. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov, order of the Select Board. Nancy Roberts, Taylor, and second, Evelyn Sue Brown, Robert, Galley, Heather, Emma, Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant representative of Shipwrecked, Mr. Rob Lowen, submitted his application. Application states that the event is going to take place on Sunday, August eighth, called Live Musical Entertainment, two duo soloists. Order of the applicant, much the same way. And hours listed on the application, ten a.m., six p.m., during the road race and music. Madam Chair, the applicant anticipates over four hundred. Any events? Mobile beer trailers are going to be. Please imply rescue departments to the application. The official application. Protocols and building out. Departments.
Okay, and is there someone here to represent the applicant? Just a reminder about these mics, speak into them, okay?
My name's Alex Khan, I'm the owner of Shipwrecked. Rob Lowen is not available tonight, so I came in to see if there are any questions, and appreciate the consideration.
Questions from the board? Ms. Goldstone?
I guess my question is to fellow board members that if we were to approve this license, would it be with an expectation that sound be contained to the lot line, or would there need to be a variance or exception or conditions noted, given that this is outdoor entertainment in a fairly small parking lot, I think?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I have a question. Is on pass. For his place in conditions such as. Make, make mention. Have your recommendation. There's other conditions that are working place. The hours of operation scheduled.
I would comment as a board member that we know that our entertainment bylaw or entertainment license parameters are really a goal rather than strict adherence that's required, and I explained to a couple of people during the week, my understanding of it is, the language in that entertainment license gives us the ability to curtail music when it comes to be a problem. When we realize that we give an entertainment license to a business and it has a residence right behind it, then we have to take it to the letter of the rule that we have available. If it's not causing problems for neighbors, and it maybe it's drifting over the lot line a little bit, as long as it's not bothering anybody or causing them a loss of sleep or ruining their life, then we don't have to go to the extreme of what's in it. But what's in it gives us leverage when we need it, because there's sometimes we have situations that we had not anticipated, and that's why we have it.
I would agree with Mr. Brown in that it memorializes what we're already doing. Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, if I may ask Mr. Khan, are you concerned with what you see as the event coming up and what our regulation is now with respect to noise in particular and granting an entertainment license? Do you see it as something that you're not going to be able to exceed to, or are you going to take steps to, you know, see that, you know, music is as lowly amplified as possible?
Yeah, it's a great question. So this is, we have three years under our belt, or at least I do, in this, in this capacity, and we have made adjustments. Doug, you mentioned, one of them was, somebody mentioned, you know, we have now the speakers facing the ocean, right? So that was a big difference, and that we did that last year, and some of the neighbors thanked us for that. But, you know, it's a DJ, there's lots of people throughout the whole day, all over the place, you know, the music is certainly louder than, you know, the courtyard in the afternoon when there's, you know, somebody just playing guitar. But it is a short period of time, it's during all of the activity. I haven't had any complaints directly to me, nor has Rob, and, you know, it's really a neighborhood business, so we talk to people all the time, and they're looking forward to it.
So, so is it a recommendation, Mr. Renshaw, that we talk about the hours? Has this been, you know, brought up, Mr. Khan, is there any interest or any agreement to lessen the hours, or have you thought about, about lessening it to late, earlier than six o'clock?
Yeah, we really, what we're doing is going by what worked last year. The hour shift hasn't ever even really come up, unless there's, you know, a specific concern.
I think that Mr. Renshaw only mentioned that as an example, if I'm not mistaken, only as an example, as a condition, the board decided to put a condition on that. That is something that we could, we certainly could do. I haven't had complaints about this personally in the last couple of years.
I haven't heard any complaints about it.
Mr. Zalinski?
Certainly, just to you. To see this, something to try to help regulate. To commonize this, oh, case by case based, I think, everything needs to be adjusted by way of others, hours, opposition, they're all fluid, I mean, that's how, that's how it reads. Doug, that's what we claim, that this could be used as a tool to help mitigate sound risk that we didn't have before, we didn't have any of it regularly, so I would ask community business owners, this board, be a little patient how this rolls out and how we can effectively make everyone happy and successful, my input.
Anything else from the board? We are struggling a little bit with our microphones, please be patient. Okay, I'm going to ask for public comment on this application. Is there anyone here to make a comment on this particular application?
Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the, yeah, nobody has ever suggested I speak louder my entire life. So I'm so grateful to the board, I'm not an experienced attendee at this meeting, and I'm so grateful for the devotion that you clearly have to the very best interests of Falmouth, and your knowledge and experience just makes me really proud to be a resident of Falmouth. My name is Colleen Brightboard, and I live on Eldona Ave in Falmouth, just a few blocks back from Shipwrecked. And I've watched the rebirth of that corner, and what it's brought to Falmouth in general, and that small part of Falmouth Heights in particular. And so this is what I wrote, but this is before, this one I had an emotional connection to the situation, and it's good that we have all of you who are looking at this from a more professional standpoint. But here's what I wrote. Given the extensive interior and exterior improvements made to the entire complex of buildings at the restaurant and adjoining hotel, I think the request to further serve both Falmouth residents and visitors in our area is immensely reasonable. That block had become very tired and was approaching seedy. As a year-round resident, I now drive or walk past that area several times a day, and it does my heart good to see young people and families enjoying themselves and spending their tourist and resident dollars there. Those dollars employ the residents of Falmouth and the surrounding areas, and like all our summer visitors, lessen the tax burden of residents by contributing to the town's coffers. It is critical to Falmouth's current and future diversity that we attract young people to Falmouth, as pointed out by Troy Clarkson in this week's Falmouth Enterprise, lest we become a one-dimensional retirement community. And as has been true for generations, nothing attracts young people like entertainment. The owner of Shipwrecked took a monumental risk in revitalizing that area. He had no assurances that if he built it, they would come, and as the restaurant became successful, he poured more money into the Heights Hotel renovations, not into his pocket. It's more than reasonable to express our gratitude by granting this one-day license. As a matter of fact, I feel it's the very least we can do. Thank you to the board.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Discussion amongst the board?
I would see no reason to curtail hours or make any other changes to the application. It's worked well for the last few years, so I would stay with it. I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move into business, and our first, first up is Kathleen Haynes, Commission on Disabilities. Hang on, Ms. Haynes, we will get you a microphone. I have you slated for fifteen minutes.
My name is Kathleen Haynes, I'm chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities. I think you have the report in front of you, but I will just reiterate, I am now the Commission on Disabilities, along with ADA coordinator for the town. We've had one person timeout with her three-year, three-year terms done, she's out for a year, and the other member had to resign because her husband is ill, she's going to take over the running of the business and the board, directors, and everything else. So she felt she's best interested herself and her family, she should resign. That leaves us with just me. I plan on going to the Balance Community Service Veteran Center to talk to them and see if they have any vets that would be interested, if they've had any vets on board, and we've got a lot we want to do. We're meeting with Lori Dower and Jeremiah Pearson, Peter McConaughey, in August to talk about the match with schools and how the parks are going to, playgrounds are going to be made accessible. And from what I understand from Dr. Dower, it's going to be one playground a year, which is great, except there's fifteen playgrounds, and one a year is not completely reasonable when you figure out how often the kids use the playgrounds at the schools. So we're going to discuss it in August, but there's nobody but me on the board, so there's no input from anybody but me. I think people get tired of my input, I really went talking. We also have the play space at Goodwill Park, we're working on, it's a large project. I've been involved in it ten years now, and I've been fighting for the playground for ten years, and I'll keep fighting, no matter, if I'm on the commission or not, I'll keep fighting for that play space. And Tracy Chappell and I, who is the member who just dropped off, were on the working group to choose the space to give to the Select Board to decide where it should be. It's ultimately chosen, I still have reservations, I'm not sure it's the right place because of the parking, the situation with Pamarav, I don't want to see accidents on Pamarav, and it hasn't been worked out. So I do have some reservations, and I think it's only fair to let people know that, that I am not a hundred percent on board. We also had Jed Conack visit us several times, he updated the commission on how the Enroe property was progressing. He brought the packing plans sponsored by the Planning Board, and he lastly, the open space in our creation study was brought to us last month to the look over and to make notes and comments on, and the person will return in August and get those comments. We persevere, and hopefully that the Select Board will allow for an advertisement in the enterprise for members, the only thing I could think of other than going to different committees and seeing if there's interest. And there's only one of me, and I work hard hours, so it's hard for me to go from place to place to solicit members, so that's the report.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any questions, Mr. Muscally?
No, no, no questions, just a comment. I had the pleasure of serving on the Commission on Disabilities a number of years ago when it was a pretty active commission, but I just want to say that the town owes Kathleen Haynes an immense debt of gratitude for keeping this commission going in the face of not having enough members to actually function as a working, a working committee or commission. So thank you, Kathleen, for keeping it going.
Welcome.
Well said. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move into a report from the Historical Commission. And Mr. Hadad, I believe you have a PowerPoint, so you're going to go up to the podium.
Yep, I put it on.
And I have you slated for fifteen minutes.
Okay, for those of you who don't remember me, my name is Ed Hadad, I'm the co-chairman of the Historical Commission, I'm co-chairman with Christian Valley. This is my commission members, I have to say that you are blessed with a terrific committee. We have a very dedicated group of people who have been on it for quite a long time. I would say that at least for the last eight years, we have not had an opening. People keep re-upping, we have a, certainly with Christian Valley, we have a very experienced and expert builder and materials person, we have a marketing person on there, we have an architect, a Falmouth architect, we have Tamsin George, who's a historian who was in charge of the Historical Society, Lee Drescher was on the Historical Commission. So we have a really ingrained, a very deep group of talented people who, who work very hard on this commission. This is, I've been on the commission for eighteen years, this is my last year, I'm going off, but the commission is, I think, in good hands. So just to remind the, the board and the audience that the Historical Commission in 2014, when the Select Board the select board combined the Historic District Commission and the Historical Commission, we have two roles. We have a regulatory role, which was in the Historic District Commission, which is to issue certificates of appropriateness for exterior changes within the historic district, and really to maintain design guidelines and administer the demolition delay bylaw, which I will explain later. On the advisory side, which was really with the Historical Commission, we advise on the preservation of Falmouth's assets. We recommend applications for historic preservation funds for the CPC. They come to us, and we issue them letters of recommendation. We hold the preservation restrictions for Mass Historic Commission and for the CPC. And lastly, we review a lot of design projects that people really may not be aware of, where we really don't have jurisdiction, but they come to us just because of their respect for the historic districts. We've worked with the Steamship Authority, both in the Palmer Street Lot and in the Woods Hole Lot, with the new terminal that they're putting in there. We worked with the Coast Guard when they put their new building in, the Chamber of Commerce. We worked with them on their restorations. And until recently, we've worked on all of the 40B projects that have come up within the historic district. They come to us, even though we don't have a regulatory authority over them, they respect the historical commissions, the historic districts, like I said, and we work with them, and they work with us, and we've been very happy with that coordination. So that's our advisory role. So this is kind of, this is our history of regulatory activity. The 2023, we have had 106 applications. Of the 106 applications, 76 of those get approved administratively, and 30 actually have hearings where the applicants have to come into our board meeting and explain their application. So that means that we're approving administratively 50 to 80% over the years, and this year, you see, it's about 70%, which what that means is, is the applicant will get their building permit within two to three days. They don't have to wait for a hearing. They don't have to wait till the next month. They get their building permit. It's done, it works really between myself and the Building Department. I will explain to you what that means. So on the bottom, when we have an administrative approval, it's usually for repairs. It's for like-for-like material replacements and changes, new shingles, new roofing, a window replacement where they're just replacing a rotted window, things like that, insignificant changes. Those get done literally in hours. When we do have a hearing, that is for new construction additions, changes affecting a house or building design, changes affecting architectural details, windows that are going to be changed, new porches, removal of porches, adding porches, dormers, removing dormers, adding dormers, et cetera. And then the other thing, like things, for example, like fencing, we will always have a hearing because we want to allow the abutters to have their say, because we notify abutters within 100 feet of the applicant property. And in cases where they might be affected, we want to make sure that the abutters have their chance to be at a hearing and tell us what they think about those things. So if there's something that might affect their neighbors, we will have a hearing on that type of thing as well. Now, the demolition delay bylaw, we administer that, and what the demolition delay bylaw mandates is that any request for a demolition of a house that is included on this list of significant buildings is automatically delayed 12 months. Now, what the bylaw does allow, though, is that the property owner can petition the Historical Commission for a waiver of that 12-month delay. So if they come in and the house is in such disrepair, it's rotted, termite, whatever that might happen, we can waive the delay. That's how we get involved in the demolition delay bylaw. So part of our activities in advisory, Tamsin George, who I explained is our Historical Commission on the CPC Commission, she's also involved with the commission in the Book of Falmouth that we get involved with, and the old burial ground projects that the DPW is administering right now. Christian Valley is our HTE representative on the Edward Marx Advisory Committee, which is in the restoration of the exterior of that building. I'm also on that committee. And then we also maintain that list of significant buildings that I just referred to that is on the demolition delay bylaw. So some of the other things that we get involved with, as I said, the Edward Marx Building, the funds have been secured for Phase One and Two of that restoration. It's about to get started, I think, in the late summer, fall, Phase One and Two, but the committee itself put the plans together, got the funds from CPC, and we secured about $600,000 or $700,000 worth of restoration funds for that building, saving the town. This is a town-owned building. We work with the DPW on the old burial ground restoration, which is in process, not the restoration of the grounds, but the restoration of the gravestones itself. We're working on Washburn Island, if you're not familiar with Washburn Island, in Wacoit Bay. That was the site of a very important World War II military activity. They actually trained the troops there for the invasion of Normandy, which many people in Falmouth really aren't aware of. So we're trying to memorialize that, and we're also finding out that there's a Wampanoag architectural issue there, that the Wampanos have a tribal history on Washburn Island. I just had a phone call with the Department of Cultural Resources for the state, and they're working on this. They're going to document it. They're actually going to assign consultants and researchers to document all that's going on in Washburn Island, so we can get a documentation and maybe ultimately a national register designation for Washburn Island for its historic value. We're working with a group that has come to us. They would like to get the Book of Falmouth reprinted. We're working on see if that's possible. It's out of print. We've lost the original plates. The last edition, I think, are sold out. They were sold by the bookstores, and we're trying to see if we can save that very valuable document of our history. And then lastly, if you recall, I was here a few weeks ago to talk about historic district markers. I'm just going to go to that, just to remind you, this is what we've proposed. We proposed 11 markers throughout the historic districts, and those are where we plan to assort them, and that's an example of what the marker looks like. That's what we presented to your board when I presented this initially. We're working with the Planning Department to get that funded, and then certainly with the DPW about getting them installed at the time, once we get the funding for that done. So it's kind of a joint effort with the three groups, Historic, Planning, and DPW, to get these installed right now. And lastly, this is one thing I wanted to include, because there's always discussion about historic district and materials, and how restrictive the Historic Commission is, and they don't allow people to do anything. And so I wanted to show you some of the newer materials that we have been approving, especially with the help of our board, with Johanna as the architect and Christian in the building industry. We've been able to identify some materials that we feel work. They're relevant. We feel if you're in that business, you know that current woods are not what they used to be. They're not as good as they used to be anymore, and some of the new materials are superior, and we think we can make them work even on a historic property. So we have approved extruded PVC decking and railing systems with a matte finish, extruded PVC fencing with that same matte finish, PVC trim. We have just recently approved that this year, so like trim around windows and corner boards and along the floodline, the foundation lines, we approved PVC, has to be painted, but we've approved PVC trim. A lot of wood alternative products like Borrel, Lifespan, Fibrex and Ultrax, those are alternate windows. They have a wood product, but they're a much more durable and sustainable product for windows that are acceptable in the historic districts. Clad windows on nonhistoric homes and new construction. We've recognized that, we don't try to pretend that new construction is historic. We're not trying to pretend that. So we have allowed like an Anderson type of a window, a vinyl clad window on new construction and newer homes that are not historic. Urothane for signs. We've been shown by the sign makers that this urethane, this blown urethane product is actually better than wood. It lasts longer, it's more durable to the weather, they can carve in it, they paint it. It's a beautiful sign, you wouldn't know the difference. We've approved that for the signs along Main Street, especially a lot of the signs that are there now are urethane. You wouldn't know the difference, as long as they're painted. And fiberglass, certainly for doors, gutters, and shutters. Again, as long as they're painted, a more durable product and more sustainable. What we do not approve, however, and we do have our limits, vinyl siding, cement siding, in other words, hardy board, vinyl windows, not vinyl clad, but an all vinyl window, chain link fences, vinyl shutters, PVC fences and railing systems. This is that shiny vinyl that you see. It's not what I spoke to before, the extruded PVC. This is that shiny, when you see a fence and your headlight hits it and it reflects back to you, that's not what we're talking about here. And on signage, we do not approve vinyl signs or vinyl lettering on signs. So that's our only limitations, pretty much. For the most part, people that come to us that live in historic districts are proud of their houses, and they're proud of being in the historic district. They try to do the right things. We very rarely get people coming to us with inappropriate changes. It's amazing how people come in, and they want to maintain their houses, and they want to maintain the historic district. And with that, I want...
Any questions from the board? Comments? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I just would comment and thank Mr. Hadad and the commission for their willingness to become, you know, more acquainted with these modern materials. They do work well as a contractor. I've been before the commission, and I find them very easy to work with, and I appreciate that because it keeps people coming rather than trying to sneak it by you.
Yeah.
There's no reason to try to sneak it by you because you guys are very willing to work with people, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, we're going to move into our business number three, consider the adoption of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, Board of Trustees Funding Allocation Guidelines as amended. Ms. Fish, and you're going to stay up there for three, four, five, and six.
And seven and eight, if you want me to. For the record, I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator for the town of Falmouth, and I'm here just to request that you, as the Board of Trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, adopt the amended Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Board of Trustees Funding Allocation Guidelines to include language for pre-development costs. We have an application, and you'll see it coming up, that triggered this change, just because it's something that we really haven't been doing in the past, and we really wanted to incorporate it into the guidelines, so we have, so it's clear for us as the working group, for you as the trustees, for the CPC and the developer. We want to be very careful. We only have so many funds, so we want to be very careful with funding pre-development costs, because it's so early in the project, there's really no guarantees that that is going to go forward. So we wanted to make it clear that we're going to use it sparingly, and we're going to use it for specific details of the proposed project, current level of availability of funding, and number of projects already in the funding queue. Those are the things we're really going to look at before we make any recommendations to the town manager to send to you.
Questions? Mr. Muscali?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Kim. I think this is a great idea, something that I think is definitely needed. I understand that it's kind of, you know, just at the inception, it hasn't been done before. Two questions. One is, is the $25,000 on top of the $150,000, or is it within the $150,000 that we're allocating for projects?
I think it would be separate.
So it would be $150,000 plus a separate category for 25, for the pre-development cost?
Yeah.
Okay. And my second question is, did you think of adding any of other potential pre-development costs other than, you know, permitting materials? And I'm thinking in particular, first of all, with all due respect, I think the wording "such as" is kind of limiting, because it's comparative to permitting, whereas maybe, maybe the language should be including but not limited to, like we have elsewhere. When you say "such as," it's kind of making anything "such as" permitting materials, where there might be other costs that might be relevant. And did you think of or consider putting in other possible pre-development costs that might be used? For instance, hiring professionals, you know, just professional market study, appraisals, things of that nature, as opposed to just permitting materials?
Well, the permitting, all of that is considered permitting material, because it's all of that is supporting documentation to get to the point that you're going to be filing a permit. So it's the feasibility studies, so all of that is inclusive. That's where we went with that wording.
Yeah, it just doesn't say that, that's all.
Mr. Brown?
I would make a suggestion, you could just add "as but not limited to," if you wanted to have a little more flexibility.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'd certainly let people know what you understand the concept permitting materials to be, that it is, you know, that type of thing that you just...
And I do think we go through that in our working group.
We do, because we'll receive an application, and then we'll go through the application in detail and see. Again, this was, it was "such as" more as an example, not a list, an itemized list, itemized list of everything that we consider pre-development costs.
Ms. Goldstone?
I really like this idea, very open to the idea. I'm just curious, you already mentioned we have limited funds and potentially multiple projects to be supporting, and I'm curious whether you think that funding of this scope at this stage in the process, is this potentially like a make or break for certain projects to get that $15,000, $20,000, $25,000 for pre-permitting, or is this kind of a nice boost for some of those projects?
Well, I think that that's what we're going to be taking into consideration when we're reviewing the application at the working group phase. We're going to take it as a whole, each application by application. For instance, you'll see the next application, it is in support of a grant, and we're able to condition it in such that either we don't grant it, or they would have to pay the money back. So that's a perfect example of how it would work in that particular application. So we would take it application by application.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the amendment.
...familiar with rentals with respect to AMI and stuff, user purchases, and I know that's your motto. They all assume that the household will be putting down 20%. How does that work?
Sure. So, no, part of the way Habitat for Humanity moves forward, folks, is that in lieu of a down payment, it provides sweat. And so that's another way of saying they participate in the building their own home. There is a combination made if a person is unable because of physical limitations to do that type of work. They're contributing to some community effort. It may be something like working within the Habitat office, or at the Restor, or something else, but it's 250 hours of contribution. else, but it's 250 hours of contributing time per adult individual within the household. So that is in lieu of a down payment. And then they do purchase the home and historically, we have utilized, a long time ago, we had Habitat mortgages, we no longer do that, but we do have low interest loans that are available through USDA. Or recently, we've been working with the Cape of Coop and several other community banks to match the USDA. So it's providing a low-cost mortgage that we hope will help them continue their movement as a economic movement and flow within the...
Is it still repriced accordingly?
Yes, we do.
As more of this mortgage is costing?
That's right.
So it's not in there?
So it's no more than 30% of their income towards their house costs.
Any other questions?
Mr. Zoski?
I have more of a comment. I had the opportunity to work just recently on a Habitat project in Plymouth over Indian Ave. And I got to meet the future owner and he was doing exactly what he just said, he was saying he would get sweat equity. It was pretty interesting to be a part of it. I saw him, he explained after me how he had to be there so many hours. Now with that, this is a common question, being that this, that was more of a rehab and existing house in addition, with something along the lines of brand-new housing, is that still the same volunteer or is that set up differently with...
So, the volunteer portion of the construction, we do use volunteers for the framing, actual building of the home. We do have, of course, professionals who are implementing all the license for it. Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
To town staff, is there any concern about, are we in the water recharge area, are we using the 805 subject here? Sorry, I bumped that on into last second here.
So, I'm trying to remember what the equivalent zone two is for surface water. I do not believe we are in that more regulated, it is within the watershed, of course, and I don't follow what we...
So, I can speak to that. So, our engineer has had several conversations with the board of health and the 805 was a successful approach on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sure that that's the fault, probably in the result, the zone report, you know, they were asking for a different type of relief.
I would entertain a motion. Brief comment to say that I know that we're considering that back with rental project and homeownership process of projects, and it's presented as a solution for each of the causes I want to move the endorsement of the motion in a letter that's included in that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye, opposed, unanimous, thank you.
Okay, well then we are here to consider the approval of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application 805, Gifford Street Extension Habitat for Humanity project.
So, that they, Habitat for Humanity filed an application, $500,000, 250 for land acquisition and 250 for construction, and that's met with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, which gave a positive recommendation to the town manager. She also ran before the CPC, which also gave a positive recommendation, and her capital support, and also is the evaluation form that we are now using. Each time we do, it's getting better and better with the impacts of the development, but they're in your cabinet as well. And it's based off of the criteria that are in the line, just kind of policy that we was adopted on the Monday. And that will take a working...
Questions on this, what you're asking? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Quick numbers questions for the, if I wrote it correct, 150 per unit, correct? Then you just had it broken down as 250 for early start and 250. Does that have to be, I've got a, 150 to 600, so clearly you're under that, does that need to be divvied up per unit or is this process that you make at the...
Well, the reason why I did it that way is because they need, they need the money separated because they need 250 for the land acquisition and then the other will be reserved. And we're actually going to, we have a motion there that if we agree that we get to that point, because it has very specific language in it, we spoke to town council and she assisted me with drafting this, that the land acquisition portion will be a traditional land acquisition as we perceive that, if you don't give it back, the other part will be more of a loan, a no-interest loan. So, that's how it's going to be set up, moving forward with land acquisition and construction costs will still be going forward, but it's still all has to be added together and make that only 150 per unit, which is one of the all time.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Question about what you just said, would you press a loan? Could you explain a little bit of that word because I thought we were awarding the funds?
It's so that if there's any default, there's a need on the property. It used to be done many weeks ago and it just stopped being done, I don't know why, and we're revisiting that.
Okay, thank you.
And it still would be dispersed the same as if it was dispersed.
Mr. Johnson's job?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to elaborate further what we mean by that no-interest loan. So it is a loan that if everything goes according to plan, in the case of ownership, the units are built and the deed restrictions are delivered, the loan never gets paid. Right? And while we're on the subject, which you'll see in the future and will freshen one's mind, for rentals, we have in the past, and I think we will again in the future, use that same zero interest loan, even more important in our rental situation, because then the, it is, is a way to enforce the ongoing compliance with the deed restriction. So, let's say 10 years after we provide funding for a rental project, if the owner stops enforcing the requirements, we could then enforce that requirement. But again, with the rental, if the idea is, if they comply with the requirements of the deed restrictions, the loan is...
Thank you, thank you for that question. Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion and I think you were asked very specifically that if you look at your options for motions, that they are read as presented. Mr. Muscally, did you find that there's two for the same letter? Would it be helpful if I just... Uh, Mr. Johnson's job?
So the motion is that the select board acting as the trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund award $500,000 to Habitat for Humanity Corporation for affordable housing at 805 Gifford Street Extension, of which $250,000 will be awarded as a grant for land acquisition, $250,000 will be awarded as a zero interest loan for construction for simple rental homes or homeownership, two of which will be de-restricted as affordable at 60% period of the income, and two will be de-restricted as affordable at 80% period of the income in perpetuity to authorize the town manager to protect all documents listed with the terms of the financial award to Habitat for Humanity.
Do we need to repeat that? I would like to move that we do exactly what Mr. Johnson's... Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye, opposed, yes, out of the unanimous, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move into consider the approval of Zero Broken Bow Lane, project eligibility site approval application, town, my word, Mr. Wrench.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the board tonight's being requested to consider approving the letter. It'd be submitted to Mass Housing in connection with the developer's application for the project, which will be set up soon, soon 40B, members of that process. Madam Chair, board, the applicant Broken Bow Residence LLC applying under chapter 40B. The project is located approximately 1.5 miles east of Broken Bow Lane, just north of T T Highway 28. Those include 16 units of rental housing for which will be affordable at 8% AMI, the minimum is involved in 25% of the 40B. Of the four duplex buildings, six units, two bedroom and one bath, 784 square foot units, two units with three bedrooms and one bath, 1,122 square foot. The two bedroom unit buildings have a total of six units, one story with four bases. Or three bedroom unit building having a total of two units will be one and a half square feet and four bases. Madam Chair, and select board, each building is projected to have private outdoor space in the rear for each unit, creating an 810 patio and private seating. All the, both units are going to be served by shared private onsite standard telephonic system with a town water service. The post parking lot, as you see, included plans for 32 parking spaces, 28 required by two curb routes to provide access to the vehicles. Madam Chair, the board members, town planning group together, summary of the project benefits and potential impacts. In regards to project benefits, proposal would create initial four units of affordable rental housing. The rental opportunities are identified as a priority in 2020's rental housing production plan. In terms of potential impacts, project is proposed by the current undisturbed neighborhood which conflicts with the, which conflicts with a substantial amount of creep there inside. Alas, the application does not include provisions of alternative energy services, such as solar panels, which is a potential... Madam Chair, select board, planning department recommends the board to approve that project in which, with or without the payment, it should be discussed tonight, formally requested by the developer, in certain actions made in the past to this project, in my view, first and that is your question.
Questions from the board? Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, so, the draft letter requests the reduction of rents of market rate rents, but we don't have any of that information, I'm just wondering what the applicant had been looking for and what we might be thinking about when we were asking, mentioning reducing rent of the market rate. Thank you.
For the record, can you say a comment for the chair? It's just a request that we make, comment, pretty common, that when a developer comes to us to discuss 40B, that they increase the required 25% to a higher convert than market rate to a de-restricted unit, whether it's 80%, 100%, 120. So there would be nothing in there, we're just requesting it.
So we're requesting them to reduce the market rate rent, you don't know what that means?
To increase, to increase the de-restricted units.
Yeah, I don't understand, you're saying reducing the rents of the market rate units. They ask you, the developer in this letter, to reduce the rents of the market rate units.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson's job?
Right, so...
Oh, I see.
So what we are recommending is changing the number of units that do have a 40B restriction. Right? So, I think you made me ask, what is the exact number of rent change that we're looking for? And the change, as Ms. Fish alluded to, would be to apply a restriction, that it would be 80% of variable income or even 120% of variable income, as opposed to not having any control whatsoever on the rent. So it's not, it, when a unit is approved without a deed restriction, the landlord can charge whatever they want, it doesn't matter what money they tell us they're gonna charge now, tomorrow they can charge another one.
Where I was, I don't understand what it is we're actually asking the developer.
So, right, so the ask would be to sort of have four units with de-restricted 40B private assets.
I mean, would it be better to refer to that in the letter as opposed to reducing... Reducing the rents of the market rate units, I mean, this seems to be saying that we're asking the developer to change what the rents are going to be.
Sure, so...
Your explaining is different.
I appreciate the question, we can certainly clarify the wording of the letter, what I expressed is different from the letter, but the, I'm gonna come back to the context of what this letter is. So, it's a project eligibility letter, which we're not gonna have, the developer's not gonna read it and just do something without discussion. The hope is to engage, that they will engage in dialogue and if we're willing to make a change, at which point, we can have a conversation about the deed restriction.
I understand completely the concept and where it comes from and what we're trying to do, I just don't think the wording is really what it is we're trying to say. And just, and then the only other thing, just to be clear, when we say creating at least 10% of the total units is fully accessible, that would be, how many units are we talking about? We have 16 units, so we would be talking about two that are accessible, not 10%, but actually two, would be the answer.
Mr. Zoski, did you want to...
Well, again, this request is just the beginning of the process, this will all be, dialogue will be adjusted and at the ZDA meeting, and that's when they dial in on what, what the fees are, all the costs are, what the rents are gonna be, and then they're gonna be part of that, they'll be part of that, of the decision. That gets negotiated during that ZDA meeting.
I, I understand, I'm just questioning that this is a letter that the select board and chair is gonna be signing, that says something that, at least in my mind, is, is not really what, what it is we're trying to say.
Mr. Brown?
I would suggest maybe, number one, reducing the rents of the market rate units, ID 120 to 150 AMI or some sort of range of what you're hoping they could choose for, to make it clear of what we're asking. What if, I appreciate the question, sir, or the suggestion, what if we, what if we change it, say to increase the number of de-restricted apartments?
I think that's what we're trying to say.
That would be...
That is what you're saying.
I would say though, this project seems like it's gonna be relatively affordable by nature, because duplexes and studios, that's gonna tend to be affordable, plus given the location and proximity to the highway, it's probably gonna be a reasonable rent anyway.
Ms. Goldstone? Can I just ask, there's always gotta be a little context in the packet, you might allude to this, in terms of this being a 40B project and any actual control that we, we have, this in my mind is a letter setting out what our vision as a select board is for, this would ideally end up as, but it's not actually, it's an attempt to open dialogue, but we don't actually control most of this, because it's a 40B process, right?
As I understand it, as we move towards, say, progress, and these continue to go forward, it will give the ZDA more latitude to be able to will shape these projects in the future. As I understand it.
Go ahead, Madam Chair. Just, in the future, going forward with, we're dealing with market rate rents and that thing prior to the application, I would like you to consider, also asking the applicant to offer on the market rate units more than...
to offer on the market rate units more than just one-year leases. You know, I've seen a number of people come in, they expect the rent is what it is, and then they're moved in and they get maybe a ten or fifteen percent increase. So I think, consider maybe asking for the developer applicants to offer multi-year terms with rents that are stated. It's not like, you know, it's a shot in the dark, but at least someone going in would know, okay, next year my rent's going to increase by five percent, but I'm guaranteed five percent if I want to go two years. And so I just suggest that you think about that going forward with some of these market rate rent requirements.
Suggest, to bring back to your board, one member. Mr. Brown?
One final comment for, to the letter. We may make mention in number four that the town has a affordable housing fund in place to incentivize such changes. Maybe that could be a standard thing to put in and request for additional payments.
We do, I just want to, we always, we usually mention and always mention it to the developers, and if it doesn't make it to the letter, it's because they've already filed a statement. But we can still improve it if you like.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
We approved the letter amended to reappoint one, increase the number of deed restricted affordable units, and mentioned that conforming with the suggested modifications to the project might result in a more favorable, we have the affordable housing fund available for conforming with this, meaning the project.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into consider the approval of 41914 Highway Project Eligibility Site Approval Application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similar to the last study, the select board has been requesting to consider approval of a letter in Mass Housing. Purpose of the letter, again, is to encourage the developer to take certain actions to mitigate the impacts. It's proposed five years, that's all. The project is located on a approximately 1.1 acre lot on Port Highway, a lot that sits from the village. Five homes, five homes are proposed, which will include three bedroom homes and two three-bedroom homes. Two of the homes will be sold for households that earn no more than eighty percent of the AMI. For Barstool County, one of these homes will be sold for a household that earns no more than one hundred percent AMI. Two remaining homes, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom will be sold to households that earn no more than one hundred and twenty percent AMI. The proposal would create an additional five units of affordable ownership housing, new homeownership opportunities, again, identified as a priority in the 2024 housing production plan. The property is not located within the town sewer service area, is within the coastal part of the way district, located by watershed. The applicant is committed to its common innovative alternative seating system and a new situation flow. In terms of potential project impacts, the project site is walkable to services and is located in a fixed route transportation service. However, the town planner indicates there is no pedestrian infrastructure on Route 28. So future residents will be required to rely on a service or their home or their transportation. Madam Chair, the planning department recommends select board approve the closure of the letter, whether or without any amendments. Formally requesting the developer take certain actions to mitigate the impacts of this project.
Mr. Renshaw? Questions on this? Mr. Goldstone?
A question to the previous letter. I don't know if this is a rental versus ownership model difference, but in looking at energy and environment alignment, encourage the developer to consider renewable energy sources. This one encourages the developer to consider energy efficiency provisions, and I wonder why the different recommendations were reflected.
That's a great question. I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
Could we add language to remember what was in the other letter?
If you would like to suggest some language, I would be happy to add it to the question. I don't know, I wish I had known in advance, perhaps, the question, we would probably have a better answer. But certainly also, research should give that, if that's needed. But we certainly, whatever amendments the board desires to make, this is just a grab. What is that?
Under environment and any lack of applications on the provision of alternate energy.
Actually, I missed, the language is the same between both letters. It encourages energy efficiency provisions, but not active renewable energy installation.
For the solar panels, we wanted to be careful because it also hits a heavily wooded area. So we wanted to, Jen wanted to mention that not to clear cut, to incorporate, but if they're able to do the solar panels without clear cutting, because there's so many trees in this area that also adds to shading and low energy use. So we're sort of looking at both, if that helps at all. Does that make sense?
It does. I would still love, I would still love to see it say, consider energy efficiency and appropriate alternative energy provisions. And actually, if I would, if I could just let it to a spread out.
Mr. Skell?
While you're up, okay. So this, again, is a homeownership model similar to Habitat. These applicants will be coming in and required to make a down payment on these?
Well, this is opposing trust.
Right.
So I don't know if they have to make down payments, if they're required to make down payments. I don't know what their model is when it gets to that.
Okay.
So let me just clarify. Do we need to go back and revoke previous, old letter and add language now to, energy efficiency? Is that something that the board will consider? Okay, so that would be with the background to open the lady project eligibility and add, do you want to say the language?
To consider energy efficiency and appropriate alternative energy provisions.
And that's beyond rooftop solar?
No, I'm thinking what you mentioned is rooftop solar as, as an alternative energy option, but that's not explicitly encouraged in the language at the end of the paragraph. It simply encourages energy efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
The intent would be rooftop solar, exactly.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldstone, you may motion.
Okay, so we're going back and we're amending both the three to one for the Broken Bow Lane project. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to go on to the 41914 Highway Project Site Approval Application Letter. And I entertain a motion for that.
Second, Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
That would be amended a much.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Skell?
There's only one, one, dematrification seating system on property, serving the whole?
For 419, no, there'll be one for each home.
Each one for each home, that's right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to number nine. Consider the approval request from the DVW to utilize technical assistance from the Bar Foundation and prove the expenditure of twelve thousand dollars as your company.
It's a long one, but I like standing behind the podium. Thank you, Peter McConaughey, Director of Public Works. So over the years, Woods Hole, Woods Hole Road, Water Street, Luskin Avenue, Railroad out of Calgary Lane, we've always had traffic congestion, traffic problems in addition, especially Water Street with his potentials where vehicles are traveling over the yellow line, sitting over the road, and heading, head on towards each other. So we're looking to get a grant to, for a company to come in and look at options down there and come up with some ideas of what can be done in the area around Water Street for parking, in the area around Luskin out of the circulation, for the drop off on steamship, and for the trucks getting off the, coming off the boats, you know, Railroad have possibility of relocation to another road. So this would be a good opportunity for, to have these, this company come in, for a grant through the federal government to be able to come up with these options. For a history context, this has, situation has come up in 2008, it's come up in 2012, and it's coming up again. So the, is not consistency between our resolutions, what we'd like to see in the community, what they would like to see. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to have a company come and take a look at it through the Cape Cod Commission and be able to come up with additional options for us to be able to take in with that.
Questions on this one?
Hi, Mr. McConaughey. Was there any feedback? I know you were going to meet with Mr. Martin about potentially moving that sidewalk back to keep the parking, is it getting traction?
Yeah, I did, I did meet with, with Mr. Martin and after going through the plans and going through the skills and what was actually needed for grading for ADA, for the additional height of the wall, and there'd also be some tree removals. It'd be a substantial difference in that area, substantially change the area because of the trees and the, moving the wall back. So that could be a good option. But when we did speed, we talked about different types of options coming out of Woods Hole Road, vehicles, slow vehicles as it's coming on Water Street. So we were able to talk about some other items that we could look at for slowing vehicles down. But I think this would be a good option because instead of just looking at the several hundred feet portion, several hundred proportion of Water Street, we're also going to be looking at Luskin out and Railroad out, circulation coming out.
To that point that Mr. McConaughey just made, I think it's going to be important, this is going to be a really comprehensive look at that area involving the steamship authority, private step we made now with Mr. Davis and the steamship authority, to bring the authority involved in this process. I think it's going to be tremendous.
So in this, to conclude with the Mass DOT was down last week, and they did a, an RSA, it's a road safety audit. So they had folks from all different town departments, public works, town planning, police, town manager's office, and they all, typical RSA they went down, they did the whole Woods Hole Road all the way down, all the way down to the steamship. Come up with ideas, they come up with comments. So they concluded a rough draft on this, too. So between the town, our work at Reddome, working with Mass DOT, and working with the Cape Cod Commission, and this company, to be able to come up with some different bare pieces and maybe some pilot programs on it and see what will work.
Any other questions or comments?
A brief comment on this question. First, I just commend Mr. McConaughey, Mr. Renshaw, town staff for not just anything, as you mentioned, the back and forth, that hasn't been working and been finding a way to improve the conversation forward. I love the first step in this, this comprehensive assessment for community engagement. I'm curious, when you get to the potential pilot phase, do you have a sense of how long those might be? Are these a few days, a few weeks, that we try different things in these areas and see how they work?
Yeah, so the way that granted, so this, this will be for the grant application, the work, the tool, both of the grant application and look at, and have public meetings to look at some of the concerns down in that area. And potentially, this could be five years, it could last five years, to try different pilot programs, to try things, and move things, and change things. But I think immediately, some of the things that we had talked about with Mr. Martin is that coming off Woods Hole Road to let them know that there's a change in the road ahead for a speed limit. It's already twenty miles an hour on Water Street. So we're not going to change the speed limit, we're not going to lower it, have it any lower. But we could have more signage out there, or more, maybe some, some of the bump out islands or something to inform the driver, the motors that are going down that area, that there's a change in the road ahead, there will be a change. So with this, the, it's, it's a, it's perfect, it's a perfect corner on the water, on Water Street. Water Street, the state owns, it basically goes diagonally from, almost across from the, with prime, the highest, highest sky spots. Across the road, the railroad out is the state lane, and the town lane begins. So the town will have to be working with the state, whatever modifications we want to down that area. Speed limit, right now being twenty miles an hour is not the issue. It's more the vehicles coming in head on pattern, traveling over the yellow line, running at each other. That's something that needs to be addressed on Water Street. But as we also spoke about the steamship, the cars going down to the boats and the trucks coming off the boats, coming up Railroad out to see what other kind of traffic happens back and to look at.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, motion, I have a question.
Mr. Brown?
Just a question about the motion itself. It's a little, I just wanted to clarify. In the motion, it says, motion to approve the request to utilize technical assistance funding. I wonder if that's actually what we're saying, that we're really going to be using public works transportation engineering services account funding. And then the request assistance from the Bar Foundation, is that not correct? Just take out that one word, control system funding, take out funding from the Bar Foundation. I think that's just a type of, this is what it's about.
Peter, we're requesting permission to engage with consultants to receive technical assistance.
Assistance.
So our foundation is actually going to supply ultimate grant funding. We have a local match.
Yes.
Oh, I just want to make sure we agree that that's the correct language.
Right.
Madam Chair, I believe that's, I believe that's, that's a proper, I don't think that's it, if the intent is.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve the request to utilize technical assistance from the Bar Foundation to apply for grant funding to the U.S. DOT to safety and load control, S-DESS 4A program for potential transportation safety improvement on Woods Hole. Luskin Avenue and Woods Hole wants to extend up to twelve thousand dollars from the public works transportation engineering services account, and we require a grant match.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have you any? Thank you, Mr. McConaughey.
Thank you.
Okay, number ten. Consider the request from the commission on disabilities to sign an application to the community preservation. Please proceed to apply the funds and costs associated with the community design and site preparation. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was previously mentioned by the chair of the commission on disabilities. This project has been underway and in discussion and been discussed within the community for about ten years. As you recall, the June seventeenth meeting, it's by Goodwill Park as the site for the all-inclusive community play space. I wanted to point out, working with the CTC, we're made of representative, Roy Thomas, I understand that petition article or article is going to be submitted by CTC to transfer remaining funding, part of the prior appropriation in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. It's been left, it was left over from the former Davisville Road site. Going to transfer that, the four thousand five hundred dollars over to the Goodwill Park site. Again, for the purpose of creating a design that incorporates features in the previous design done at Davisville Road. However, now we're going to apply that to the new Goodwill Park site. The commission on disabilities will be requesting from the CTC funding in an estimated amount of fifty thousand dollars for the costs associated with completing the design and engineering of the all-inclusive community playground of the new selected Goodwill Park site.
Madam Chair, I want to point out, the agenda title talks about such operation from.
Madam Chair, I want to point out, the agenda title talks about site preparation costs associated with the site, with the project. My recommendation, it's a practice, that the select board approve the request from the Commission on Disabilities to submit an application to the C P C, funding for the costs associated with completing the design and engineering of the all-inclusive playground. We're not looking for, we're looking for a site preparation, groundwork, or site. That will be a later phase. Right now, it's my intention to wrap up and get to 100% of the design engineering of the all-inclusive playground at the Goodwill Park site. So that would be my recommendation, that the board approve that the C P C, the Commission on Disabilities requests an application to the C P C, funding for the costs associated with completing the design and engineering of the all-inclusive playground.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just have one comment after another very busy Goodwill Park, we're going to not only just construct the playground, but we're going to come up with a solid management plan for access to the playground, because that park gets so busy.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add, great comments, and we're actually, Mr. McConney, the P P W Director, Assistant Town Manager, she needs to put a form of a working group to talk through those issues, irrespective of this proposed all-inclusive playground, we're going to stand the issue of the Goodwill Park access, part of the lot management, that's what, so, because we're working group in terms of, we've got started discussing possible solutions, really good solutions, and it's, 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 we're out of the back of the, the all-inclusive playground.
Ms. Haynes, did you want to give us a comment?
I thought we were estimating something for the area. I'm shocked to hear this question, that Tom and you did it, so, they're new.
Any questions or comments?
I think there's a misunderstanding. We are considering approval of the request to go before the C P C. It's just a prospect, so.
For the motion, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request from the Commission on Disabilities to submit an allocation to the Community Preservation Committee, to apply for funds for costs associated with engineering and design as well as renovation for all, including playground development and Goodwill Park.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, respectfully, I would request that the board consider amending that motion. Again, the, the, the issue with regards to the, this chair, she had requested initially money for site preparation. The discussions with D P, the P P W Director and myself, we decided that it's in the project's best interest to move on engineering design, we're talking about purchasing playground equipments and moving dirt. We really do need to incorporate this design on the Goodwill Park site. It's a different, it's a different site. That was the issue with regards to the initial agenda summary. Ms. Haynes prepared the original agenda summary, with the intent of applying to C P C the money to purchase literally the playground equipment. I didn't feel, the D P W Director didn't feel, we were at that stage, we were starting with park equipment support, when honestly, set preparation.
Was that $50,000, the $50,000 number that's estimated includes site preparation as well as, it seems like a low amount if you were going to do in site preparation as well as the design.
So, Madam Chair, and so, remember, Miss Calley, no, will that include set preparation or? It will include getting to 100% design for the new all-inclusive playground at the Goodwill Site. It's the 50,000 estimated, which will be part of the application to C P C that approved tonight. In addition to the 24,500 remaining, the project was initially being analyzed for the updates for, so, it's now, it's taken in, again, part of that article, the C P C's going to be considered, assuming that remaining funded, 24,500 to Goodwill Park site.
I see, so I approve that motion.
I understand the preservation on the part of, Ms. Haynes, this is a project that's been back and forth in different sites under consideration, and I'm sure it's challenging. What she perceives is nothing that I, that I agree with the, you have to have the design completed before the board starts doing the work. I'm in favor of the motion, as represented by Tom and Joe.
Is this a motion amended? Do you have to amend this, this, this?
I approve.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Mr. Brown, did you just make it?
No, I just, I didn't.
You agree, go ahead, sorry.
Well, then I make a motion that the Commission on Disability to address the submit an application to C P C to apply for funds for costs associated with engineering and design for the all-inclusive playground development at Goodwill Park.
Second. Okay, the motion is the second. Any further discussion, members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, you guys have it. Okay, we're going to move to consider the request for recreation to apply to the Community Preservation Committee to see if we can complete improvements to John Hill Little Field complex, Mr. Nelson, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board will remember that there were improvements that were approved for the John Hill Fields on Jipman Street, the, this was during the pandemic, and the costs were really skyrocketing, and unfortunately, more than, well, about half of the planned project for the two fields there could not be completed with the funds that, so, the funds are, most of the funds that have already been approved by town meeting for funding that came from, from official funds, have been expanded, those improvements are near completion. However, there is still quite a bit of work to be done. Field two improvements have not begun, and there's some additional site work that Public Works Department is recommending that would not be included in the original scope of the project. So we are seeking the board's approval to submit a second application for community preservation funds. We have designs for most, but not all of the work that the Public Works Department is recommending, the county manager and the Preparation Department are supporting at this point. We have a working estimate of the cost, of the cost, of all of this work that we would like to initiate, and that estimate is $24,000. We will be working with an engineer to flesh out that design, and that number will be updated in turn for the, 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 for the term. And so the, the work includes site work, repairing, repairing, retaining wall, it was lighting, includes disability improvements, and that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, Recreation Director, if you have any, if you have any questions or comments.
Questions from the board? So, you want to take a motion?
Joe, aren't you retired?
Oh, no, no.
Actually, with that entree, I might correct myself, Joe is still on the payroll, working very hard, but he, as of today, is not the Director. He is in a support role to our new Recreation Director, who is, who is, who is, who is tonight.
Yeah, there's some questions. But the vision, the vision, the cost to complete the, 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 the project. Yeah, the motion is the second. Any further discussion, members of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, and you guys have it. Okay, we're going to move to number 13. Consider approval of an application for secondhand dealer's license. We'll apply to the Community Preservation Committee to see the project to standard and location preservation and restoration of Village Junction Community Building located at 212 Old Main Road. Mr. Redshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're going to have a short presentation tonight for the project architects. I just wanted to, before she begins the presentation, I wanted the boards to know that late last year, the Assistant Town Manager and I had an opportunity to, in a meeting with Maria of Catalyst, she was going to talk about the actual application request. The Assistant Town Manager and I had a chance to kind of walk through the community building located at 212 Old Main Road. And as you can see, the packet, the purpose and intent behind this request is profoundly related to renovation of the exterior envelope. Several areas of that building that are falling into disrepair, if not depressed and repaired to be restored and renovated, simple, there's some, 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 some issues. So I think Maria is ready for the presentation.
Sorry, I was not aware that you had a presentation.
It's real brief, we're just going to go through a couple of slides, kind of illustrate it to the members.
Go ahead and tell me what your presentation was. Um, my name's Maria Waiver, you mean to speak to my people? Thank you. Here, ma'am. My name's Maria Waiver, and I'm with Catalyst, the caregivers. Um, we were hired by the North Valley Village Association to provide special services for their building. So what happened with this project was, we were originally hired, maybe a fee of $20,000 to do schematic design and redesign, which design includes the existing conditions review of the building, measured the building, went through the exterior and located areas that needed repair or preservation, I should say. And what happened was, that North Valley Village Association had gotten a grant for $20,000 from the Traveler Tourism State Agency, and $10,000 of it was rescinded. So we were, we needed to regroup. We decided that we wanted to focus on the exterior, we had enough money, we could use to, we could really take a good hard look at the outside. So these drawings, they show. So we basically did a full building measure, and you can see here the existing roof plan and floor plan. As a galactic point, we weren't able to focus as much on the interior. So we focused on the exterior. There's a lot of damage to the building, wear and tear, the existing roof needs to be replaced, there are wood trim items that are rotting away, they need to be replaced as well, several shingles are broken, missing, rotten, water damage. The windows are pretty much not usable to people for natural ventilation purposes, they can't be opened. So we're proposing replacement of the windows, existing doors. While we're replacing existing doors, we are also upgrading them so they're more accessible to accessibility, to improve accessibility inside the building. So basically, you know, we're asking for money from C P C to do the exterior restoration and preservation of the building. In addition, we're asking for some funds for schematic design, so studying the use of the interior of the building, and improve accessibility for that as well.
Madam Chair, thank you, Rick. Madam Chair, to summarize, there's a copy of the projected budget, budget in your packets this evening. The ultimately, the, I want to just, to know, scope, order, need for about $100, C P C will be part of this estimated request. You can see a project budget on one, including.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, this was, because I'm new here, I'm assuming since this is, in our packets with your recommendation, the answer is no, that there's presumably no issue with the rest of the building, not the town, applying to conduct renovations on a town building. And is there a, a back and forth process between Town Staff and the Village Association as, as this project is proceeding?
Just sort of what we've had before, as I mentioned, Madam Chair, it was late last year that the Assistant Town Manager and I had an opportunity to visit the building, and since then, it would have lasted about six months, I would spend that back and forth discussion. And what I'm saying, I'm going to ask a question about as far as the process going forward, as far as the applicants to C P C, let's, I guess, do that facility to the Village Association, it's certainly a question needed for renovation, we have the exterior.
Right, so the, the town, that the owner of the building will essentially be the responsible in designing projects, so that the contractor will be named the town, the, 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 the Association. However, Association has been terrific about putting their sweat equity into the project, recognizing, and, 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 as we have for our own four buildings that, um, still, still instead of, so, that would be a partnership, a legal, a, a, a project.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
As you, on your door, in your schedule, you have impact, is this in class? It's not really required anymore.
No, no, we, we actually changed.
Rick, you speak in the microphone. You speak in the microphone.
We actually changed that, and we were able to bring that number down.
Good, thank you. I have one more. What level of detail will we be able to expect? Will the roof tips be like weak shingles or just boards? Do you have that figured out?
I haven't yet, I'm guessing whether it will be appropriate, this building.
Because, you know, nowadays, we rarely see wood roofs done, and when we do, we're even more rarely do we see the hips actually weak, but it's such a cool old building, with the history, it was so interesting, being an old fire station, and the fact that Mr. has worked there for his whole, that'd be great, thank you.
I could speak for two minutes to the importance of this building to the town. Many of you do not know the history of this building, still. I'm sorry, I'm the Incarnate, I am community engagement at North Valley Village Association, also serve on the cultural act. With me is our treasurer tonight, we stand for the entire board, who is dedicated to the stewardship of this building for 45 years, it's been in our erditch for that long. It was built, as I said, it was built in 1915 for approximately $800, it was built at the time, it was host house number nine. And host house number nine is recorded in the National Historic Record. And it does our long range, to bring this back to a living history, which the town serves. And that's the overall intent, and I'm not going to bore you with the rest of my speech, I could give you a handout, describe the economic benefits of it, of town, the cultural and community benefits. Any, any questions or comments?
Yeah, the person who can take the motion?
Is the motion specific or is it, is it, is it? There is a recommended motion in your package this evening?
I make a motion to approve the request from the North Valley Village Association to apply to the Community Preservation Committee for funding for exterior envelope preservation, restoration of the Village Junction Community Building located at 212 Old Main Road, North Valley, as presented.
Have a motion, please. Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, and you have a list?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to number 13. Consider approval of an application for a secondhand dealer's license.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to number thirteen. Consider approval of an application for a secondhand dealer's license, curator seventeen Walker Street, Suite A. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, very important. The applicant, Mr. Mary Brady, who's listed as the only curator, submitted a new secondhand dealer license application from July ninth. Now, Katie has reviewed the application, has no concerns with the license approval, however, indicated that figure for background checks is going to be, of course, a little bit up, but hopefully completed prior to the issuance of the license. Fire rescue and building department has also reviewed the application, had no objections to its approval. And the zoning administrator has reviewed as well, and indicated that the property is currently a future forty p building. Madam Chair, I was listing, this is property located in central Walker Street, Suite A. It's my recommendation, the board approved the issuance of the secondhand dealer license to the curator, and located at seventeen Walker Street, Suite A.
We have the applicant, any questions for the applicant? Very straightforward. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the issuance of secondhand dealer license from the curator located at seventeen Walker Street, Walker Street, Suite A.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you kindly, you are welcome, good luck. Okay, we're gonna move to consider approval of an application for a seasonal common victual license, the T room, one ninety-six, Chris is bringing it up in North Falmouth. Mr. Brown?
Madam Chair, last year, twenty twenty-three, the applicant applied for and the select board approved a seasonal common victual license. A copy of that license, zero zero nine SCA C U D, is attached to the application. The, that particular license stipulated indoor hours of operation of the establishment Monday through Sunday, AM, eleven PM, and the outdoor hours of operation, they can come to the license, Monday through Sunday, AM, to nine PM. Also stipulated, prior license, maximum seating capacity is limited to twenty-four people. Madam Chair and Board, in this twenty twenty-four application, the establishment seeking below hours of operation, slight modification. Indoor hours of operation, Monday through Sunday, AM, ten PM, and outdoor, Monday through Sunday, from AM to nine PM. The police department has reviewed the application, and does not recommend approval of the seasonal common victual license, due to concerns that the police department has, that the establishment is located in a very dense and populated residential neighborhood, and the past issues of individuals bringing their own alcohol into the property could potentially make concerns about safety. Our residents also reviewed the application, stating in your packets, they have no specific objections. The building department and health department have also reviewed the application, and indicated no issues or objections. Madam Chair, in consultation with police chief and command sound, I concur with the concerns expressed by the police department, and my recommendation that the select board does not approve this common victual license.
Do we have the applicant here? Sir, if you would go up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Aye. Hello, I'm Mike Potella, I'm one minute, just to come down.
Questions for the applicant? You heard the recommendations from the town manager, the issue of fire and rescue and building department. Mr. Scally?
Joe, if you answer the comments made by the town manager with respect to individuals bringing alcohol onto premises, and what steps, if any, do you take to ensure that that does not happen?
Well, she would make a charge. This is news to me, the police never came to me with anything, any issue ever like that. Quite frankly, my family's ran the T room for almost forty years, in the same capacity. We're really just continuing the common victual license of what we did in the past. Honestly, I understand BYOB is legal in Falmouth, but we don't, we haven't even, we haven't really been open since twenty twenty, so I have no reason to understand it, other than someone speaking to the police about something that's really not true. The police hasn't been to my house to talk to me about it.
If my manager's wife, you have another question? With respect to the hours of operation, I realize that it's a very small, tight residential neighborhood, is there anything, would you consider lessening the hours of operation so that they're not going into, you know, late, in ten PM, Monday through Saturday, and so is it so nightly?
The hours of operation, which I think you said that they were changed, because really weren't trying to be changed. In the past, it was a, an arcade, because we kept opening to the kids till that time. We'd never had anything open for adults till that time. So I really, I guess I need to speak to the police about, if I'm late.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Scally, so we've got really a lot of letters in opposition to this, and I know we did admit this in the past, and could you be a little more clear? Did you say that we thought BYOB was legal in Falmouth? Did I hear you correctly?
I did.
Okay. But if you don't have a liquor license, I don't think you're supposed to be allowing, consuming liquor on the first instance.
Madam Chair, something around three-year-old, your BYOB is not permitted without, uh, townhouse, so we have some modifications we'll refer back to in the future. Liquor regulations, yes, BYOB is not permitted. I do have to ask, at least you could be here, as well as Captain Riddick, to answer your questions and the rest of their observations, maybe see the past history.
I will say that, I guess that's probably where that came from then, if you thought that it was okay, then maybe that's why, maybe neighbors have been observing that and...
No, I'm glad to get the clarification, but I still haven't, I haven't utilized that, I, it's not, we haven't even done anything there.
Okay. Another thing that's been noted by neighbors observing and sending in photos is the picnic tables on the parking spaces out on the building, and also vehicles that I guess often park day to night in those parking spaces.
Yes.
Those are public parking spaces, correct?
No, those are known as parking spots of mine, that I block so that people don't park there, and park in, block my parking spots. They're on my deemed, uh-huh.
Okay, thank you, I didn't realize that.
Other questions? Mr. Wilson?
I make a question maybe for Chief Lord, and also for town staff, if there have been these recurring concerns and complaints, while we're saying he's not aware, have there been conversations with the honor, have there been complaint or warnings issued to the honor? We do have Chief Lord, and, good afternoon.
I'll let you address it, I wasn't here, sure.
Okay, Mr. Scally, can we just have a special, uh...
Captain Brander, you're from the police department. I did have a conversation with Mr. Scally, so we go, we applied for an alcohol license on premises, and there was a lot of community pushback from the neighbors that opposed the application at the time. We had a discussion, and ultimately, the police department recommended against approving that license, and I think that's, I think that's the action that we're taking. More recently, we haven't had formal complaints in the moment, we've had anecdotal conversations with a lot of community members after the fact, nothing that we could actively investigate at the time, but we have had a number of conversations with people that are concerned about BYOB activity at the establishment. So if it comes to just common victual serving food, we don't have any objection to that, but it's the, it's the answer to the issues with the BYOB, that everyone's telling us what's happening down there. And if it's the board's decision to approve the common victual, then the police department is going to take the more aggressive role, keep an eye on what's happening if there is some BYOB activity out there, and just make it very clear that it's your establishment, we're going to be holding you accountable if it's happening.
Thank you. Mr. Scally?
So just to clarify, Mr. Joe, you have not been, you've not been operating since twenty twenty, is that correct?
We've done, sorry.
There was a conversation prior to twenty twenty, it's been a few years.
Yes.
Please address the board.
So, you have not been in operation since twenty twenty? I mean, we did grant an application.
You did last year, so what happened is, because of a family sickness, we didn't get our final inspection, or else I wouldn't even be here today. I'm just trying to continue license that has been there for a hundred years at that place, and, you know, forty years for my family.
So I guess my question is, if there were incidents of BYO or something like that, it would have been in twenty twenty or before, is that, as opposed to in the past?
I can only assume what people are talking about, like, the neighborhood, people walk around with drinks. I personally don't drink, so there's that. I haven't been open, so if someone was on my property having a drink, it probably was a friend of mine that came over, but we haven't, we haven't had a party and said, come have a BYOB. We tried to get a liquor license, we had some people decide that they thought it was a bad idea, had a lot of support as well. We didn't get denied, we pulled our application, since that time, we haven't done anything. But what I'm here for today is to continue my victual's license, which I've always had, and my father along prior to me.
Mr. Zelinski, do you have a question?
Yes. Do you remember coming before us with respect to, we were running without licenses for a while too, is that correct?
No.
You said your wife had nut something, and the license had lapped, so...
Yeah, but we weren't running. We did that last year, and that's what happened, but what happened was, I never got my, I got an inspection, we thought we were all set, but we didn't get our final inspection, so we weren't signed off, so that's why this isn't a renewal, this is asking for a new...
So you've been running, so you haven't been open at all?
No, sir.
So the pictures that we see, and complaints that we've gotten...
The pictures that you see may see about Fourth of July, when everyone and their mother is having a party, you know...
People, and I think that's where some of the problem comes, it's so uncontrollable that there's no way for you as, as the business owner, to control what's happening on and off your property, which is part of your responsibility as a license holder.
There's a hundred percent opportunity for me to control anything that goes on there, and I do.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
Just note that all emails and concerns are in opposition to this, and we have a negative referral from the police department. We don't have any support this time from this community on this item here, just noting that, we are...
Mr. Scally?
Just, just as a comment, but nonetheless, the applicant hasn't been, hasn't been operating since twenty twenty, and I don't know, I mean, I, that's what he says, I don't know if it is verifiable proof that he has been operating possibly, but, but those instances that are raised by the, by the community would have been things that occurred three or four years, that, that, that was when the applicant was in operation.
Can I interject? I'm sorry. Had I known that we were gonna have a conversation like this, I could have had this whole room packed and the outside packed, and with a half an hour, I could probably have the room packed. Every day, five people ask me, when's the T room opening? We've always been there for the kids, families, what we tried to do is do a little bit more where your family was with you. So what happened in the past at the T room is, the people dropped off their kids and they drove to the courtyard to have a drink. What we wanted to do is find out a way how families could come in and stay with us, kind of like Pompaness in Marketplace, where people come, sit at picnic tables, father has a beer, the kids play miniature golf, and that's that. That's our application, what we were going to try to do. So we had some people that heard that if they write two hundred emails, then that would stop us, so we had a coalition against us. We had much more support for us, and if you need me to show that to you, I very well can. Not everyone's gonna like you in life, and unfortunately, this is more like that. I don't think that they can really tell us that we did things wrong. Most people come to the T room and say, oh, I remember this, and my grandmother, and we provide people with more, more memories and their remembrance of memories. I can't speak for everyone else of why, what they have the problem with, but not everyone's going to like you in life.
Would anyone like to speak on the salvation?
My name's Stephen Rafferty, and when I was first in Falmouth as a part-time summer residence, we had a cottage in New Silver Beach. I can't speak to what's gone on in the last three or four years, but I can tell you, when we were raising our kids, they looked forward every day to getting on their bike with a dollar, or fifty cents, or seventy-five cents, and going down to the T room after taking their sailing lessons at the Wild Harbor Yacht Club, and getting some candy, or getting some chips or whatever. So it's very much of a specific type of neighborhood up there, and people are very close, and they have their things in August and everything. I don't think it's a place that should serve alcohol, but unless there's a specific thing that went wrong, I think you guys can find a way to give a victual license, to let the T room open up, because I know people continually say, it's been closed, when is it gonna open again, and it's really part of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real briefly, I don't think we're opposed to him selling candy to the kids or hot dogs, it's just, we don't feel there should be alcohol either sold there or imbibed there. It's a beautiful little village neighborhood, it's gorgeous down there, it's just very tight. I'm gonna keep an eye on, I'm gonna send directed patrols down there to make sure people aren't walking around drinking, you know, alcohol openly, they shouldn't be doing that. So, you know, at the end of the day, he wants to sell hot dogs and hamburgers and candy to the kids, we don't have a problem with that, it's just we don't feel that alcohol should be consumed on the property, that's all.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Good evening, I'm Pam Kirk. I have two homes on Moses Road, one abuts the T room property, one is a hundred and twenty-five feet away from the T room property. My big issue is, the twenty, the inside license was serving food, or entertainment is fine with me. It's the outside dining that will prevent, will promote trash blown away by Mother Nature, food dropped on the ground, which won't get, might not get picked up. But my most important thing is to change the, if outside dining is allowed, that it's brought down to no serving after six thirty or seven, so we as a butters do not have to be involved in conversations that are fifteen, fifty feet away from our bedrooms, that's less than this room. We're very, it's very close, and my, my biggest issue is the nighttime hours if you allow the outside dining.
Thank you.
Hi, Casey Cork, I also live in the community, I live right, you know, in the center.
You did send us an email, correct?
I did, yes. My major concern is accessibility, the outside is primarily sand, I don't understand how there would be ADA routes to get to tables, to get to bathrooms, the number of chairs, seats inside and out, it seems that there's about six... Um, the number of chairs, seats inside and out, it seems that there's about sixty seats set up outside right now, um, and that leads to parking. So it used to be that kids rode down on their bikes or people were walking around, but I am very nervous about having more, um, cars in the neighborhood, specifically in the evening, really worries me. Um, and we have no parking. There's like three or four spots at the end of Ocean View toward the beach there. There's no legal street parking anywhere in that neighborhood as per the, um, Falmouth Police Department. So just worried about people driving around, looking for spots, driving around. We also don't have a commercial harbor, so people who do come in by boat expecting to get a meal anytime of the day or in the evening, there's no place for them to leave their boat or leave their dinghies. So safety is probably, safety and accessibility are probably my two biggest concerns, um, for the tea room serving food, specifically at night.
Thank you. It's the board's pleasure.
So I'll say I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with the idea of, of, um, rejecting a request without, um, formal documentation of, of issues, of warnings, of, of that sort of thing. And, and obviously you've said, you, you had a conversation, but it was a few years ago again, that the, the issues are not necessarily, where we do have documentation are not necessarily current. Um, I, I hear the, the concerns. I feel like some of those concerns are, um, more of a zoning issue to some extent if there's parking or not, um, if it's ADA accessible or not. Um, and, and I'm hearing from, um, from Chief Lori, uh, that, you know, there's, there's not really a problem with the common Victula, um, and that there would be increased vigilance. And so it feels like, to me, I guess it feels viable, um, understanding there are definitely concerns.
And I think that one of the things the board may want to consider, um, a concern that was brought from, from the community, um, maybe we do suggest that they scale back the hours at night. You know, we would have moved forward to grant, use the condition that, that it doesn't go after, you know, outside as well.
Outside as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that's unreasonable. Give her, if you go, if you go down to North Falmouth, which I have many times, it is really close. Uh, and so I, that suggestion I thought was, was a little reasonable.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll echo, uh, Dr. Goldstone's, uh, comments with respect to, I think the town manager's recommendation was based upon the, uh, the position of the, of the police with respect to their issue. It seems like, you know, they're not objecting to the Victula license. So I, I certainly think we could move forward and improve it with some restriction on the evening hours, maybe seven o'clock, uh, Monday to Saturday, and maybe five o'clock or six o'clock on Sunday for the outside area.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I think the way that, what maybe was leading to many of the concerns from the neighbors, Mr. Shell didn't understand that the BYOB didn't apply in Falmouth, so maybe that led to a history of, uh, some incidents that were causing concern in the neighborhood. Now he seems to be, uh, fully aware of that, so manages property more effectively. So I would think that we could probably work with him and reduce hours for outdoor dining.
I also think it's important to reiterate that, um, the police chief made it very clear that they will be really watching and they will, um, increase the diligence so that there, if there is any alcohol that's going on to that property, they're going to be attentive to that. The other issue though, that another resident brought up is, um, I want to make sure that there, there isn't trash strewn up, because again, it is a very small area, it is residential, and I would ask that you really be attentive to that as well.
As you can.
No, the board's. Mr. Scally? Mr. Zelinski?
I, I'm with the feeling that it's a kind of quality of applicant to present a proposal. To present a proposal, uh, someone that's been there for fifty years obviously knows his, his neighbors and his butters. If you touched them on tonight, he said, "We can't be in control of everything." And he said, "Hand me control of everything." At some point, I remember our last hearing, it was around and around and around, we did the same thing, and nobody really ever nailed anything down. Um, I think that the others and public safety and accessibility should be, um, should be addressed more formally, and somebody needs to own that responsibility other than at least after they get caught. So, um, until there was a more clear plan and assurances by the applicant, I wouldn't be available.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. Did you want to address something?
Yes. Last year, when I came before you folks, um, Ms. Kirk suggested new hours, which with her recommendation, we adjusted. We got approved, but we didn't get our final inspection to then have our paperwork, or else we wouldn't even be here today. So I don't know how going further and limiting a business on hours of operation would help anything. Um, and as far as parking, you are correct. The neighborhood has a bunch of non-conforming roads. The road in front of my building is the only conforming road in the neighborhood. There is actual parking there. We have parking ourself. Beach parking during the day takes just about everything and then some. There's actually people parking all over the place that they shouldn't be. Um, that's not people coming to my place. If you park in a legal spot, I would imagine you're subject to be towed. Um, I always am diligent about whoever comes to our place to make sure the parking is one of our spots or a safe spot, a good spot, but as of four o'clock, three-thirty, even on July fifth, you could park anywhere you want in the neighborhood legally. There's nobody there. They all go home for supper, walk home. And the people that are parking are really mostly driving from farther up in the neighborhood, convoluting the problem, but, uh, at four o'clock, when you're speaking of like trying to later on changing the hours, that's actually when there is parking. There's all kinds of parking.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
One more question that, that was brought up.
Mr. Scally?
With, with respect to the bathroom in the premises, is there an operational bathroom in the premises?
Yes, it's ADA compliant, it is.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a seasonal common Victula license to Tea Room 196 Crystal Spring Avenue in North Falmouth, with the condition that serving outside, uh, premises, outside the premises be limited in hours from eight AM to seven PM, Monday through, Monday through Sunday. No, I'm sorry. Uh, indoors would be Sunday from eight AM to ten PM, outdoors Monday through Sunday, eight AM to seven.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, we're going to move into, consider the approval of a petition to, sir, we're going to move on. Consider the approval of a petition to the State Traffic Engineer for speed limit changes along Woods Hole Road in Falmouth pursuant to the Mass General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen, under Chapter Three-Fifty-Eight, Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During this meeting back on April eighth of this year, the select board voted to approve submission of a petition to the State Traffic Engineer for speed limit changes on Woods Hole as reflected in Exhibit A, which is attached to Act of eighteen. Such a petition to the State Traffic Engineer must be made, and the department's transportation has ninety days to approve or deny the petition. On approval of petition or expiration of that ninety-day period, that may actually be taken. Petition for speed limit changes, state effect, department's part is called, besides. And the chair, select board, as you recall, this was a full petition, our, our table town meeting from the Smart Citizens Task Force Group, select board opted to instead draft Town Manager's office to draft a petition, draft this letter. Um, there's a draft letter attached to your packet, which Town Council has prepared for consideration, and it would be my representation, the select board votes to approve the submission of the attached petition to the State Traffic Engineer for speed limit changes, which reflected in Exhibit A, so it's a chapter that I have to session.
Questions from the board? No questions? Mr. Scally? Really? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the town manager's recommendation, that the select board vote to approve submission of the attached petition to the State Traffic Engineer for speed limit changes along Woods Hole Road in Falmouth as reflected in the attached map marked Exhibit A in pursuit into Mass General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen as amended by Chapter Three-Fifty-Eight of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two. Uh, motion to, oh, excuse me, motion to approve petition to the State Traffic Engineer for speed limit changes along Woods Hole Road in Falmouth as reflected in the map marked Exhibit A and in the Mass General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen as amended by Chapter Three-Fifty-Eight of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two. All right, it's competitive.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we're going to move to number sixteen. Designate a member of the select board to seek input on the request to name a water treatment plant for Raymond A.J. Do I have any volunteers? Okay. Mr. Brown, I would nominate Mr. Brown because the members of the select board submitted on request of the need to name the water treatment plant Raymond A.J.
The reason I volunteer is that Nolan Gray, since he came to town, I helped him renovate his town hall office when he first became the Water Department, and that's what we call now the Old Water Department Meeting Room, and, uh, we became pretty friendly over the years, and I always enjoyed speaking with him about his projects.
So I'll second your motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, designate a member of the select board to seek input on the request to name the sports field or village green for Harry Hill. Any volunteers? I nominate, I nominate Mr. Scally.
Since I work for the recreation committee, I would certainly, uh, agree to take that on.
Okay, and then I would nominate Mr. Scally as a member of the select board to seek input on the request to name the sports field, the village green for Harry Hill. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, my move is to consent agenda. Does I vote for the consent agenda if any board member would like to hold any?
I don't know if I'm Mr. Chair.
Consider approval of an application for special one-day all alcohol liquor license on Road Race Eight, VIP tent, Falmouth Heights Ball Field, Sunday eight, eighteen, twenty-four, seven AM to two PM. Consider approval of an application for a special one-day wine and all liquor license shipwreck, ASIX Falmouth Road Race Afterparty Shipwreck, uh, Heights Hotel Parking Lot, Two-Sixty-Three Grand Ave, Sunday eight, eighteen, twenty-four to ten to six PM. Okay, sixth grade board, consider approval of the warrant of, for twenty-twenty-four State Hymer on Tuesday, September third, twenty-twenty-four. Consider the acceptance of a donation from the T-Ticket Civic Association from the amount two-six-hundred dollars to the Veterans Council donation account. Thanks. Consider the approval of a request from the Veterans Council to spend two thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-one cents from the Veterans Council donation account to assist a Falmouth bedroom with expenses associated with fuel and emergency hot water heater and appliances. Consider the acceptance of a grant easement for a water main extension and two-five-five old main road. Consider the approval to pay for the town manager's registration travel expenses to attend a twenty-twenty-four International City County Management Association Conference.
Mr. Chair, I'm of the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to move the consent agenda. I motion and this is a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll go with the minutes. Would you vote to approve minutes of the session, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four? Did everybody have an opportunity to take part in the meeting? Any, uh, amendments, changes, additions, or factions?
The chair, moving into, uh, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, on the session.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, town manager supplemental report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll report this soon.
Okay, select board reports. Mr. Scally? Mr. Goldstone?
Very quickly, I had the pleasure of attending the, um, beach employees appreciation breakfast this morning provided by Goldstone Dock Association. Just want to say thank you for all the support that Goldstone Dock provided, so it was a really great event, and it raised the value of stuff.
Thank you for representing the board.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Brown?
I will report that, um, at our last short-term rental working group, uh, Town Council advised us she had enough information now to assemble a big draft of a law. Were you at a next meeting? I did previously, uh, can, uh, you were mentioning management fee, but the court was serving an easement. The room was really packed with people that were considering some of our budget. Many of the fishermen spoke about the fact that the area where the proposed turbine would be going was currently a fishing ground, especially in winter, when they don't travel too far into the Gulf of Maine. There was definitely some effects, there was also concern raised about the fact that these thousand turbines have proposed to be floating to the poles with chains. And one option pointed out the fact that, uh, fishing regulations required entities with a pin called breakaway chain, so that a whale gets it, it just breaks away. Now we're thinking about four thousand maybe, chains with links, or six feet tall and as wide as a person. So there's a lot of interesting comments and questions about, you know, thinking on it, so the conversation will continue. Then, uh, also, I think, much recently, I mentioned, uh, part of all our meetings and committees, the, uh, discussion with whether or not to have the town purchase denitrifying septic systems and then provide them to the homeowners and then provide a monitoring system. I spoke, actually, initially, my comment was that I didn't think it was maybe a smart idea for the town to be buying denitrifying tanks and providing them, but after I spoke, which Mr. Waterbury made a comment that it's really the best way to have the best project. And I think he swayed me to his thinking, so even though it's a lot of work for the town, it might be the best outcome, but that's the most recent information now.
Thank you for keeping up with those, and I just, I'd, the funding source, I'd want to know where they would get the funding.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Zelinski?
Um, I'd like to recognize this liaison with all the board, they were the organization, and congratulate, uh, Ms. Murphy as the new chair. Uh, Mr. Walsh will take on the role of vice chair, and Mrs. Duffy will be the clerk of the board chair. If you do accept all of that, the way they worked that out was pretty impressive.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, Mr. Scally, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.